You ready? Are you sure?
I'm not gonna start until you're ready. We already know who you are. Is that to remind you?
Here you go, Andrew. Andrew, you tell me when you're ready.
Yeah, are you ready?
As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of adjustments. We would like to remove item 3C regarding the street acceptance. We'd like to add item 3E regarding recreation advisory board vacancy. That information has been provided to you all, and we'd also like to add a closed session for legal advice.
All right, got that noted on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agendas presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the sole source town vehicles. Oh, that's part of the consent. My bad. I don't have my readers tonight, so this is gonna be a challenge. Okay. All right. So up next will be introduction and special presentation, and tonight we'll begin with the awarding of service firearm and badge. Chief Tart.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here this evening to recognize and honor Officer Neil Johnson, who retired on February the first for 30 years of law enforcement services at the state of North Carolina. Neil began his law enforcement career with the Dunn Police Department in 1992. He later worked with the Johnston County Sheriff's Office before coming to the Clayton Police Department in August of 2010, where he has served the past 12 and a half years. Many times, police officers are often asked to do many things that may not be necessarily written in their job description. Neil Johnson has played many roles as a police officer in the police department. On any given day, you may see him doing any of the following: putting out cones and barricades for an event, patrolling the greenway in one of our UTVs, investigating a wreck on Highway 70, helping out a stranded motorist in a school, serving as a school resource officer, walking around with a bunch of kids, talking to them, and doing a tour of our police department, instructing law enforcement officers on the firearms range, conducting an active shooter class, working the front desk and handling the many phone calls of citizens who walk in the front door, and as all of you know, spending many Monday nights here in this chamber with us. He has worn many hats at the police department and has worn them all well. Neil comes to work, does whatever he's asked to do, doesn't create drama, and goes home to his family. He just goes about his business and gets things done, and I don't need to ask him twice if something got done or not. I just know. His position can be replaced, but Neil Johnson, the person, cannot. He will be missed by many, but hopefully we'll be able to keep him around a little bit in a part-time role. I've known Neil for over 20 years. He has been a dedicated employee, who has given 30 years of his life to helping others, and is honorably represented and served the town of Clayton and the Clayton Police Department for the past 12 and a half years. So tonight, I'd like to present him with his gun and badge in recognition for his dedication and commitment to the town of Clayton and the Clayton Police Department.
I'll try to keep this under an hour.
You can have all the time you want.
I'd like to thank the town for the opportunity to work here for the past 12 and a half years. The, like the chief said, for 30 years, been doing this, and the past 12 and a half has probably been the best part of that 30. The past two have probably been the best out of those 30 years working with Chief Tart. Back there. That's all I got. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for Neil Johnson, Resolution 2023-05.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval of resolution for Neil Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir, and we have cake.
Well, leave us some, okay? Yes, but before everybody leaves, I'd like the opportunity for council to offer some comments as well as the mayor, but let's start with Mayor Protem.
Neil, you've served us very well, and I think the mayor tell you, for those of us that grew up here in Clayton and drew meddling back there, you know, we all knew who the police officers were. We knew them by name, us little kids on the street, you know, felt that we could go up to any one of them and talk to them if we had a problem. And that was in a town of under 5,000 people. And now that the town's grown to about 30,000 people, out of everybody that works for the Clayton Police Department, you're probably the most recognized officer, and the little kids in town and the adults and the senior citizens all know Neil Johnson, and that speaks highly of your character and of your ability to truly embody what community-oriented policing is supposed to be. And, you know, there's a lot of people, it's easy to stay in your car and keep the windows rolled up, but you're not one of those people, and everybody in this town respects you and appreciates what you've done.
Absolutely.
Neil, just for me personally and those who know me, I have a special fondness towards men in uniform because of my background in the military and my brother being a police officer for 25 years. I like to say in this day and age, in this climate that we in, that we appreciate you and all that you have done. I wish more individuals like yourself, which are a lot more you, get highlighted more than some of the things that are highlighted. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service.
I echo everything that's been said. I've seen you at so many events throughout the years, living in Clayton, and just appreciate your presence and kindness and calmness that you've always had whenever there's been something to come up. And also thank you to your family. 30 years in law enforcement is a sacrifice, and I appreciate their support of you as well, and I'm happy to hear you might have a part-time role with us. So look forward to that.
Let my council finish, and then I'll give you the floor. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, Neil, like I said, you know, I mean, well, one thing I know is this is a growing town, and so I do appreciate your tenure here and everything that you've done for us, especially, you know, when it comes to leading by example and also making sure our town stays safe. So I think everyone appreciates you, and anyone that lives here knows that, you know, with people like you on the force, it's good to live in the town of Clayton and feel safe when they, whether they're sleeping at night or whether they're doing anything around town. So I appreciate you, and like Andrea said, I'm happy to, well, I'm happy to have you a part of, you know, part-time as well. So thank you for everything, Neil.
I want to echo some of the same sentiments. Appreciate your service to the community. It's been very important, and you are one of the ones that you see around town everywhere, which is great. You know, I hope you can work part-time if you'd like, but then please do also enjoy your retirement, enjoy it with your family, and I treasure those moments, too. Thank you.
So for me, you know, if we've learned anything in this society, it's that constantly be aware of your surroundings, right? So I'm being a present of my surroundings tonight, and when Chief Tart says, we might get him back in some sort of part-time position, there was a little bit of a smile on your face, and then it went away really quick, and I couldn't really tell if that meant, sure, he thinks I'm coming back on a part-time, but I really ain't, or maybe I am coming back, but I don't really know. It was priceless. Just know that you're welcome to serve town of Clayton anytime that you want to. We appreciate everything that you have done. The years that you have sat during these council members, I have never felt more safe in a world where things can go unsafe pretty quick. But the absolute phenomenal beauty of this evening is to see the support that has your back while you're up here saying what you want to say, because that group of people on the back wall back there that the camera may not can pick up right now, they've had your back, they've had my back, and they definitely have the town of Clayton's back, and we appreciate every single one of you, and we wish you the very best. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, I will give you the floor, but I'm gonna have to ask you to come to the microphone.
When Neil started in Dunn as a policeman, they called me and asked me how I felt about him being in law enforcement. And all I can say is, the good Lord in me has been there for him, and that's what counts. And thank you all for letting him be part of your force, too. And be safe, oh, love you, be safe.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. All right. Now we'll give you a chance to get these some cake. Thank you. Matt, you don't get any cake. All right, up next on our agenda is the year and month of the trail.
Good evening, mayor and council. The three of us stand before y'all this evening, really representing our boards. In 2022, the state legislature designated 2023 as the year of the trail, and at that point in time, we began having some informal conversations with our different boards, and really what we have before y'all this evening is not just something symbolic that is being done by boards across the state to designate 2023 as the year of the trail for their individual community, but we wanted to take it a step further and actually designate a month of the trail in the town of Clayton. I'm not aware of anybody else who's doing that. Not saying, hey, we're innovators in that regard. However, this is something that the three of us, in conjunction with Ben, as well as our advisory boards, really wanted to do something that targeted recognition of our trails and trail opportunities in our community by further designating the month of May. And in the month of May, we're developing a number of activities that'll shine a light on the trail. It's pretty cool that the square-to-square event held on the East Coast Greenway and Mountains to the Sea Trail will be in the month of May, but we're not quite ready to reveal what all of those things will be and the dates of those individual events, but you can look forward to a 5K movies and a number of other events that'll be held along the trail during that period of time. So in short, the designation of 2023 as the year of the trail came out of the Great Trails Coalition, which is a statewide effort. Agencies like Parks and Recreation Departments, libraries, downtown development corporations, DDAs, you know, many of these Chamber of Commerce, many of these groups have come together and identified trails as a source of economic development. Walkable communities are better for our health and our lifestyles, and they've said, hey, look, we really wanted to shine a light on this. They took that to their individual elected officials, and that's kind of how this evolved. But now you're seeing events pop up all over the state to shine a bright light on trails in North Carolina. So I'll stop talking. Before y'all, we're asking for an adoption of the resolution and designating North Carolina's year of the trail here in North Carolina, as well as one step further designating May as the month of the trail for the town of Clayton.
Awesome. Thank all three of you. And with that, I would like to read the 2023 Year of the Trail proclamation. Whereas the town of Clayton's natural beauty is critical to its residents' quality of life, health, and economic well-being, and whereas the trails that span across our community are an integral part of the recreational and transportation possibilities of our area, and promote an enjoyment of scenic beauty by our residents and our visitors, and whereas the parks, greenways, trails, and natural areas in our community are welcoming to all and provide a common ground for people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds to access our rich and diverse natural, cultural, and historic resources. And whereas the town of Clayton's natural assets and resources are integral to disaster relief and resiliency to climate change for future generations, and whereas the town of Clayton's natural trails vary from the mountain to the sea trail and the East Coast Greenway to the mountain bike single track, and whereas trails offer quality of life benefit to all as expressions of local community character and pride, as outdoor workshops for science education, as tools for economic revitalization, as free resources for healthy recreation, as accessible alternative transportation, and as sites for social and cultural events. And whereas the town of Clayton is actively working, become known a trail town, and whereas the North Carolina General Assembly designated 2023 as the year of the trail in North Carolina to promote and celebrate the state's extensive network of trails that showcase our state's beauty, vibrancy, and culture. And whereas North Carolina is known as the Great Trails State, therefore, I, Jody McLeod, do hereby proclaim 2023 as the year of the trail and May 2023, the month of the trail in Clayton, North Carolina, and commend its observance to all people duly noted on the sixth day of February 2023 while in regular session. Thank you. All right, up next under public hearing is Project Life Dust Development Agreement.
Good evening. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. The developer requests to continue the hearing until the March 6 meeting.
All right, we will continue this until the March 6, 2023, regular meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Up next is the fiscal year 2324 budget, public input.
Mr. Mayor and council, as we've done the last several years, this is an initial public hearing just for the public to be able to provide input for things they may want to consider to be incorporated into the FY24 budget. We are just kicking off with staff. They're preparing their budgets that we intend to sit down with them over the next couple of weeks to get an initial idea of where we stand, but we certainly would love to hear from the public if there's any thoughts or any areas that they would like for consideration.
All right. Thank you very much. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Up next, we jump to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Well, just to follow up to that, we will be sending out our annual survey for the budget as well. That will be coming out here shortly, as well as we're looking at setting up a portal through the website or at least an email. So if anybody does have any input they would like to put in in the future, we will welcome that input. A couple of quick dates while we're doing some updates here. First and foremost, tomorrow, we have a couple of community-wide drop-in events related to some plans that we have. One will be held here, the Greater Triangle Commuter Rail Feasibility Study Public Input Session. That'll be held 5 to 7 o'clock right here in the council chambers. At the same time, generally, tomorrow, we'll actually be having the Gateway 42 Public Meeting out at Clayton Community Center from 6 to 8 p.m. That'll be the public's opportunity to hear about some of the ideas being formulated kind of around that copper district interchange where future I-42 and 70, or excuse me, and 42 by the hospital. So please come out and give us your ideas. We'll be holding a downtown master plan update. That date was actually moved to February 28th later this month, so we'll have another opportunity at the next council meeting to remind folks of that opportunity as well. But certainly tomorrow night, for the public that are interested, two great opportunities to voice your opinions, hear some of the great things we've got going around town, and provide some input. That's it.
All right. Thanks, sir. Town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
Any other staff? All right, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. Anyone wish to speak? Yes.
Not very good at this, but I'm gonna try. My name is Betty Scarborough. I'm in the Parkview community, which is the single-family homes and the townhomes that are located in the left side of city road. are located in the left side of City Road if you're coming from town. Something that we did last week was one of the residents organized a pickup trash Sunday. We did it Sunday afternoon, and I was part of it. And it was pretty discouraging. We, our community is on city dump road, not really city dump road anymore, but it's city road, but it used to be dump. And Stallings in the back where the railroad tracks are. Those are two really bad areas for trash. People come by and just say, oh, it's just one piece. I'll throw it. But then you have 1,000 people throwing one piece, and you've got 1,000 pieces in the trail, in the gutter laying there. And some, a lot of the workmen that are working on some of the construction for the additional townhomes and things are also just discarding their lunchboxes and things. So and then on Stallings, one of the ladies, one of the residents tried to get some help from the town council, and they said, well, they can't do anything. That's the North Carolina Railroad. Well, she tried reaching the North Carolina Railroad, and they just blew her off. And so I kind of thought that maybe you could consider, I don't know if it's possible, that on those two parts of it, which border our whole community there, if it couldn't have maybe some kind of a signage that is a penalty if you're throwing trash out, you know, a fine for whatever, $250 or whatever, I don't know, and kind of make it something that, hey, they think about it before they toss it out of the window. And we also cleaned our own area up too, which I'm on the HOA board, working with them to, you know, try to keep the neighborhood clean that way too as well. But this is kind of the actual roadways where we've got many, many, you know, hundreds of cars traveling those roads. And would like to try to make that suggestion that can we have some kind of sign that will carry a penalty with it? Is that something legal we can do? Or is there some way to, you know, kind of, you know, make it so that they'll stop doing this? And because I sent to Porter, and it was like maybe a 10-foot space on City Road from like right at the street to, you know, like just 20 feet down. And it was just a bag full of trash, a bag full of trash, plus all of what I still had to pick up on it. And I said, this is just, you know, this is ridiculous. We shouldn't have to have this happening. And I understand, though, it's such a public road, going back and forth, so many people. But I don't know if that's an idea that can be considered, that you could put signage up somehow. We're going to try to do another spring pickup. The lady who ordered or organized this last one, we're getting more people together because it also got our community together. Because, you know, everybody's busy, and we've had the pandemic, and, you know, people have been scared to come out. So it was nice because people were actually working together to spruce it up. And, you know, we don't want to be a carry, but we sure would like to have a clean Clayton, you know? Plus for our children, for the children. I don't have any children, but grandchildren that come and play. For the children too, for it to be clean. So I'm hoping that maybe you can, you know, we can try to look at something like that. I did want to compliment on the municipal park. It's great because it's a nice throughway for us to get right up here to town, and I walk it a lot. So I think you're working on the sidewalks, but I hope you are. And I just wanted to mention something about some of the sidewalks. When we come up out of Parkview and I'm coming up O'Neill, those sidewalks, hopefully they're included in, in the plan somewhere to do something with them because it'll make the town more friendly. More people love the fact that they can come into the stores, the shops and that and be able to do the local business there and stuff. So that's another thought of it. And I think that, I think that's, yeah, I think that's it. But that's most important. We'd like to see what we could do, you know, and even probably at Clayton, when I don't know if any other areas are as bad as we have there. But, you know, I would like, you know, maybe we can have a whole Clayton town somehow organize a pickup litter day. And we still, unfortunately, still have our North Carolina Department of Transportation trash bags still sitting on City Road. They haven't come to pick it up yet. So it's like, and that was about, it was about 10 bags we got in just that small area. So just would like to see if maybe that might be something we can do, hopefully think about doing.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
First of all, thank you and your neighbors and your neighborhood for the community service you provided to town Clayton. It's ironic that I drove this past Sunday up behind the West End Shopping Center and crossed over the railroad track to get on Stallings Street. And it is completely trashed through there, behind the trailer park there, all the way up. So we have a contract for grass mowing for the railroad right-of-way, but I'm not sure if it covers that part. And if it doesn't, then maybe we could look at, you know, something because really there, it's a lot of debris. It's a lot of giant broken limbs that are down, and it's a lot of trash, just random. And I just noticed it Sunday riding through there. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, it's terrible over here. But, you know, if that's not a part of the contract, because what we see from here all the way down, it's nice and clean and maintained. But from, from about where you're talking about, all the way back to the West End Shopping Center, it's trash.
You're talking about the one that's like before, right after you come under the underpass there?
Yes.
And somebody said there used to be an older woman who used to pick up all that trash all the time, and she stopped doing it. So I don't know if she's passed away or, you know, or what's happened. But someone was talking about that last week, that she always used to be out there doing it because it's just, you're right. I mean, it was terrible.
It is.
It's not a very good look for Clayton, that's all I can say.
Exactly. But yes, we will take all that under consideration and advisement. We'll get with our attorney and see how we can move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Porter.
I'd like to say something, also, Ms. Scarborough, thanks for coming and speaking. I don't know if this is an opportunity for maybe our PIO department even maybe send a campaign or something to communicate to the citizens to just, you know, maybe be conscientious of their trash and, you know, throw it away instead of throw it out their window of the car. But no, thank you for coming and speaking.
All right, anyone else? All right, if not, I'll turn it over to counsel for comments. Mr. Thompson.
I just wanted to commend you for, you and your neighbors for picking up that trash. And I agree with Councilman Casey. I think it's time that we do a town-wide litter campaign. And I think that can start with collaboration between our communications department, our law enforcement, and our code enforcement. I think we could probably put together something really good to throw out there to people and, you know, in the form of videos, education, education regarding enforcement, penalties, you know? And I do think that we could, we need to examine signage. You know, we've got town ordinance and there's state laws against littering. And I think we could certainly, we've got grounds to put signs up to remind people. But I think on a bigger scale, I'd love to see our communications department engage other departments, and maybe we can make this a town-wide campaign. And perhaps when it's, when your group gets ready to get together for the next one, it can be on a much larger scale and not just limited to your neighborhood.
Awesome. All right, anyone else? All right, if not, then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for legal advice with the attorney.
First.
Second.
If ever say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion carries.
All right, so is there anything else that needs to come before this council? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion carries. Good night.